I'm gonna send it to you right now.
All right.
Cause I have your email.
We are recording.
No, I mean, I have your email.
It's exactly five.
So I can just text you here.
I'm just trying to justify it.
As soon as I run.
It's exactly five and I hope we do it very quick before we get started. And that's on and running. Wonderful. Welcome everyone. Welcome to the September LPC meeting. So good to see everyone. I hope everyone's been having a good summer. I know we've been busy on the, lots of things flying around. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from both July and August. So we should probably start with July.
Move approval.
Any discussion?
No.
Uh, we, I don't see any...
No.
...body else attending, so we can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Excellent. Thank you Barbara so much for doing that for us. And then also the second is for August, to approve the minutes.
Move approval. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. Second thing on the agenda, and we can just get right into it, is our pop-up visioning cards. So it's happening. We have like close to a hundred digital responses. Which is very, very cool. I will give kind of some highlights at the board select meeting later tonight. Working. Seems to be going well. Thank you Bernadette for making the box downstairs.
Oh yeah. Hot pink. I figured it would be noticeable.
We're a hot pink kinda committee. I appreciate it.
And Shayla knew it was there. Well, just, you know.
Yeah.
Cause it doesn't get lost in a maze of everything else.
Yes.
And Shayla was there when I put it out, so she knows it's there to direct people to it.
It's appropriate.
Certainly not better than her. Yes. It's great.
Who's the doll? Everybody's trying to see.
Barbie. That's right. Has any...
You see Barbie walking around in pink balls.
That's very tight. Has anyone, and I think David was handing out some cards and...
I'm gonna comment on that.
Please, go ahead.
The, it seems my only connection to town affairs these days is through the garden club. So I apologize for that.
Sure.
But at the meeting today, my wife passed out whatever postcard she could. She said they were snatched up. There were sixty ladies that couldn't read it.
Nice.
Which was actually less, but she could have used a lot more. Now that population can do the internet survey, at least some of them can. But it's still not easy to get there.
So, a little bit of pointed discussion for that. I think, so the link I sent you, and I can send around again, can be copied, forwarded, emailed, all that kinda stuff. So it works.
It works then.
Works. All that kinda stuff. I agree. I think the QR code maybe skews a lot younger, but the actual little shortened link, and Garrett can jump in if you're... Check my, check my tech. But the little shortened link, you can copy, send anywhere. I haven't had any trouble with that. The, I believe Wyatt is not posted yet on the website despite us asking. I think there is a bit of a compliance issue.
Just turned this off. Sorry.
I use the term compliance, but in that we are just sort of sponsoring that Google Sheet, which is okay. As opposed to like a, for the quantitative survey, the town is gonna have to buy a Survey Monkey.
Well, I want to ask that because...
Yes.
I'm less concerned about the pop-up cards than I am about the post survey.
Yes.
Now, our presence, I, I'm just geared into the town website.
Yes.
And I know some people are. And our presence on the town website is pretty spotty.
Right.
And I think we need to fix that by the time we send out the survey.
Agreed.
Agreed. I think Garrett was gonna, we were, we were kind of hoping to task with the town IT soul.
Yes. Around like possibilities and things we can do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so they're gonna, I mean, that's gonna be part of my ask tonight is Scott. This is, you know, there's a procurement process that the town has to be compliant with to use in there. And this is very low tech. It's gonna be, you know, like a hundred and whatever dollar Survey Monkey thing. But it's, we have to go through that process. But in the build-out, maybe Garrett, if we could warm up the like, hey, put our talking points on the website and...
Yep.
I, I haven't asked, hey, will you put our Google form on the website? But I kind of interpreted the silence when I forwarded it that way, is that was perhaps the concern. It's cause that we're, we're just personally hosting it, but it's working quite fine, so.
Okay. It's just, it's working fine for those of us who know how to get there.
Right.
And I just think we have to make it easier.
Right. I, I meant, I meant more working, at least the narrow little tech piece, not, not commenting on that. We're getting it to everyone.
Okay.
But the form is working.
What would the goal be? Like if, if you were to have an ideal presence, like what would you wanna, like actually have on that page outside of what's there now?
I would wanna have a link to the local planning committee efforts somewhere very visibly, either on the front page or in news or whatever. And then I would have liked to have on our committee's webpage, a fairly robust list of the survey and other things, other main talking points. So that someone who can find our webpage can easily see what's going on.
Okay.
Not a lot of design, but it's...
Yeah. It's, it's bare.
Yep.
David is totally right.
Can I add to that? I mean, I think it ought to be linkable down through the, the planning department. If this is who we report up to, you gotta navigate there. And it ought to be off of the town page. And it ought to have whatever we've hardened as our mission.
Yeah.
Cause we ought to be able to point people to, here's our mission, and you ought to be able to link to the survey.
Which, which is...
There's basically three places. One is somewhere near the opening, you know. Anybody in town, they don't know where they're going, and pretty quickly they could see something that goes to the local plan. Then the other two places are, as you said, the planning department, and then we're a board, or a committee, I should say.
Board and committee.
We're a committee. So, we should have, if somebody look, if somebody searches the website overall, or somebody searches planning department, or somebody searches our committee, either any one of those three ways should get us to that point.
And I'd like for us to be able to put up our news, or our schedule, or our chevrons to say that. We need to condition people.
It is, so it's very bare. It has our names. It has our agenda, or it has our historical agendas, and it has our upcoming agenda, you know, our upcoming agenda. And I think it does have a link to the recordings. But for sure, it needs like the talk, no?
Right.
It's so unnecessary.
Okay. I know it has our agendas, cause I actually just used it. I, I used it to put our presentation together.
It's got the agendas, the minutes, and the schedule. And then everything else is basically the updates for news.
Yeah.
For the rest of the town that just says...
Which is very confusing.
Yeah, which it, I...
If they, oh, is this our news?
I think the same thing, yeah.
And if we don't need anything like automatic design, just current. Like I think it would be great to be able to put the talking points, i.e. that, thank you for that Sharon. Those are a great summary of like, what is the LPC.
Right.
Got it. Yep.
Okay. So onwards we go about the, the pop-up cards in all formats. And I think there's a ton more to do on that. And there's a few later points in the agenda that we will come up on that. The, just to point everyone's attention to, thank you for creating those talking points. Is there any question or feedback on those? I, I kinda was reading them just to, that's our little brief elevator speech. They're in your email. I can send them again.
The full talking points are not brief. That's a law. Yeah. That's a law.
But, but, you know, I mean, it gives you...
When I think talking points, I think...
Yeah, yeah. But it kind of gives you, it's a page.
Oh yeah. You know, for us, that's important to have all that.
Kinda gives you the verbiage to... Was there any feedback, thoughts, criticism, complaints?
And I started from your slides that you showed tonight.
Oh yeah, those are fun.
Yeah.
We're already good on that.
I thought they were really good.
Thank you. Okay. But the talking points are, there was a, Sharon really put together a formal thing on tie-on-bond letterhead that is, you know, lovely.
Those are good.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, just to stay in order. Thank you for those of our committee members who went to the East Harwich Development Meeting on Saturday, August nineteenth. The three of you, thank you for going.
Four of us.
Four.
Four. Awesome. Amazing. Sorry, I didn't know you were there.
We had a crowd.
Amazing.
We almost had a post-it, but not quite.
Can I ask a question on that?
Please.
We had four out of ten.
Yep. And when were we gonna be in trouble? Five out of ten? Six out of ten.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know. That, I, I'm aware, I was aware of that when I saw Ed come in, and then I started watching, cause I was expecting...
And there's a bit of a clarification, Jeff Handler in his book, at the, um, open meeting law training that's gonna go on in September twenty-eighth. That is a question that if you're not deliberating as a committee or discussing, but as a private citizen, if you're coming, what is the, there is a formal clarification needed about that. Just as a citizen, if you wanna go to a meeting, why shouldn't you be able to? So, it sounds like we were safe in the letter of the law, but there is a point of clarification pending about that.
It's confusing, yeah. I think it has to do with whether you're gonna speak, because we all got up now and went in there at six o'clock to sit in there.
We can. Actually, okay.
We can if we shut our mouths and we're not.
Correct.
Because we didn't post it, and so, I mean, I'm not gonna plan to. I'm, I'll go home and watch it on TV.
So that's just coming up in the agenda. Jeff, as our liaison to the select board, actually did clarify with the town.
Yeah.
If, when, when it is our time to go.
Yeah. People never used to know about that.
Which I asked him just to like send a smoke signal, we can go over there. If anyone would like to go, you are welcome to. We're just, you know, not speaking as a committee type of thing. But you're welcome as a citizen to go, and I would encourage you to.
You would have to.
Kind of thought it would be fun to show.
And you're gonna finish the meeting before we go, or are you gonna...
I hope, I hope too. I don't know. It's a little bit fluid. Let's see how much we get done.
Most of us purposely didn't speak.
Correct. I was hoping that we would finish all of our work before we...
But you think, what is it, two minutes?
Uh, probably twenty minutes, and I hope we get our work done before that.
It took me three and a half hours to type all that up.
Okay. All right. Trucking along. So we talked about the select meeting, select meeting, and we can go to... Yes, no. Can we have a brief summary? Bernadette gave us some notes on that.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was just like extreme of consciousness, what everybody said.
Oh yeah.
So we, we put it in, just kinda building our system here. We put that in our thank you. We put it in our outreach folder, so that we have a trail of what kind of outreach we're doing. Simple to do. Does any one of you want to just give us a high-level summary?
I think, Senator Garrett, a lot of very passionate people. Some people that really don't understand process, but I think as they go through what they're doing, they're going to educate themselves on that. And that will be very helpful. And the only other thing is that I don't see us continuing to work with them and collaborating. I tried very hard to explain to them that what they sort of did spontaneously on their own was exactly the model that we are going to be using, and that we will be going to many different segments of the...
Varying opinions stakeholders. They have to be one stakeholder.
Community, right. Right. One among many. And I think, I hope that message got through, and if not, they'll know when we don't show up at their next meeting, I guess.
I found it very, a very positive outpouring, if you will. Cause I, I'd had several conversations after that with people that were either in the meeting, or neighbors that were curious. Cause I, I live over in East Harwich. And, uh, cause some people are starting to ask, so what's your committee's opinion? And I'm saying, we don't have opinions at this point. So we're actively listening. I said, to that point, that was a wonderful session to get some things out on the table. And I said, it was, you know, very interesting that we didn't just hear from East Harwich, but we heard from West Harwich. We heard from Harwich Port. And I, I said, it was, it was a good opportunity for many issues to get out on the table. Now, that, that committee or that group will do some things on the...
It's not a committee, but a group. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's self-proclaimed.
It's a community group, right?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's, and that's perfectly fine. So, but I, I thought it was a very good opportunity for, for four of us to, you know, in a, you know orchestrated fashion, to get a number of things out on the table.
I feel like it was a, it was a good outpouring of support for that group, right? And it was a vehicle for them to essentially voice their opinion. And I thought it was good for that venue. I think what it opened my eyes to was exactly why we're doing this. And it was to consolidate the frustration and the information, and actually be able to put a plan in place that people can operationalize on. Like I feel like that's, that was the missing link. It was almost like there was a lot of disjointed opinions. They were all around kind of the same commonalities, which are the main pressing points, I think, in our, our committee's purview anyway. But then it just illustrated to me, it's like, okay, they need help to take their voice and then advocate for their group or community appropriately.
I didn't go to the meeting. I'm probably jaded enough from having heard that same argument for thirty-plus years. But having said that, I think that is a viewpoint that is very prevalent in our community, and we have to fully involve them as much as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only other point I wanna make is, they got a lot of, whether it was just the Harwich website or whatever, they got a lot of people out, they got, they got their message across. So we should learn a little bit from their means of getting people there.
My, my sense is, and please, uh, jump in on that. My sense, and I, is that a lot of community dialogue is happening online.
Yes.
In social media.
Yeah, that we need to talk.
And we, so, just me, but you feel free to run, have posted to our links and the mission to those groups, both the Harwich old timers, and I love Harwich, I actually even did Harwich High School alumni. And you can kinda see a blip in the numbers after I do that.
Good. You gotta keep doing more of that.
There's, yes. There's, I mean, there's all sorts of sampling bias in that, but it is, it's something. Yeah.
So David, when you say that, uh, viewpoint, what, you listen to that viewpoint for...
Stop, stop the group.
Okay.
Um, or at least control the rich part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, well...
No, go ahead, please.
You know, I sensed a lot of frustration on their part, one, you know, the whole issue of this, this all happened without anybody being notified. Well, you know, that's what our zoning ordinance currently says, and that's the process, you know? And that can be changed if you want, but, uh, that's not gonna happen quickly. And, you know, there's a frustration that things aren't going to happen quickly, and they wanted to, to do something. You know, the, one of the principal things that really, I think, riled somebody up is when somebody like Mr. Marsh gets his subdivision appealed, the first thing that happens is he comes and he just literally clear cuts and pulls out every, and, and I said, you know, there are towns that have...
Tree ordinances.
Tree ordinances, you know? And that, that, sometimes they're wrapped up in the zoning ordinance, and sometimes they're standalone ordinances. And if you wanna run that, because that seems to be, you know, and something that impacts folks next, the neighbors next door most. You know, you can put, put together an ordinance, shop it around, uh, and ask for a special town meeting if you feel the need to have it enacted quickly.
At some point in our process, we're gonna have to drill down from identifying growth or environment or whatever as a generalization, and decide how much we wanna get into specifics. And I think the tree one is one that we should very seriously consider. But that's getting pretty far down into the details. And so, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do.
I keep noting it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I kinda mark it on the... Could I ask a specific question of, and I may be very late to this game, but I've, I've known it, and then it's come back around for me. In that particular setting, the kind of fraught of, people are really writing checks right now in that part of East Harwich to hook up to the sewer. And what that means in the context of then, you know, development around a particular price tag. Was that really articulated as a, or...
I don't recall that much conversation about the sewer.
I literally just wrote a check for this, and, you know, and it's a lot of angst, which I'm like, that's a thing.
And I think it is. I think it's certainly an undercurrent. I don't recall there being a lot of mention of that.
Okay.
They were really more concerned about development, i.e. developers coming in, um...
I think taking advantage of maybe the, uh, the wastewater expansion was something that came up, where they were more worried about, okay, if there's no septic limitations, these people can build even larger homes.
That's what I think the, that's what I think the undercurrent was. Okay, now I see why East Harwich was the first on the block to get the sewer, so that you can come in and do this.
It's a hard, there's a lot there to process as a person.
So this is why I said, there's gonna be an education component for these people as they go forward, because a lot of passion, a lot of frustration, a lot of telling us what problem, saying what the problems are, not a lot of understanding of what it's gonna take for you to get the actual concrete solutions. They, that, there are not, a lot of people that don't understand the process. I think the planning board chair got up, or zoning board chair got up, and he explained that thing, that right, a couple of times it came up, that under the current planning board zoning...
Yeah, they have to.
Why can't the select do it? Because that's what our laws are now. You have to change it.
Yeah.
And then that will happen slowly. That's what I mean about, people are gonna get an education, they're gonna start to learn for themselves, get involved, which is a good thing. And take action. As they wanna take action, they find out what it takes to take action. That'll be helpful.
Which I thought was a good thing. If they wanna take action, let, let them take action, become part of the process.
Right.
I thought that was actually a good outgrowth on how in the meeting, stood up and said, hey, the best thing you all can do in this meeting is do something. Volunteer, get involved. That's how you make change.
My, my suggestion that they do, that they call for a special town meeting, which are...
Oh, they're all set to do it. I think they're all set to do it, and I don't think...
It's a process suggestion.
We should encourage that. I mean, that's, we should look. Can I, I just wanna make one comment before I lose track of it.
Please.
In, in my world of doing lots of strategic alignment with, with lots of Fortune 100 companies, in, in the process of doing strategy, you're always uncovering things that we would call low-hanging fruit, or some things that you could just go after, because they're not part of what you gotta work on for three to, you know, five-year development. Is it possible that we come up with something like this, which is the, the trees, or you've got a plant in behind the development, that we can just find a way to assign it out to the planning board, assign it to somebody that becomes a champ?
It's not our job to do, that's not our job in this committee to do their work. That's...
Okay. I'm not asking, I'm not...
I guess...
It's a recommendation. I, I know our job is recommendations.
Oh yeah, as part of the plan. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess our job is recommendations, but are there things that we...
And going through the process, I mean, Ed kind of encouraged something, right? A, a particular point of, I mean, not encouraged, but you were like, okay, here's a, here's a process tool.
I was gonna knock that down, but yeah.
But there was a process tool in this process, and us even listening and sort of participating peripherally, that made meet your point of like, the whole thing.
And I, I agree Bernadette. I don't mean that we're taking it on, but maybe we're putting it on Jeff's shoulders to say, you know, maybe there's low-hanging fruit, you know, Jeff is a liaison, say, let's just get, somebody get working on it.
There are things that can be done to address some of the issues that, that were raised in, in the meeting. And I do see it as part of the charge of this group to, to come up with action recommendations and assign them to the right parties within town government.
If we went through the list of their concerns, I can guarantee you Sharon could give us a whole bunch of techniques that the places have done. And we could say, well, yeah, let's really push this. Well, do we really wanna set a limit on how big the houses are? Maybe, maybe not. And there's some that are easy, some that are harder, but...
Yep.
And those were, you know, a couple of things that they were reacting to what was, you know, the, the clear cutting happens, and then these mammoth houses that get built over their back fence, dorking them, and sort of lowering it over that, haha, you're not as rich as we are.
Could I follow that? A, a process question, which in the, which is related to some of the sentiment. In, say you own a house in East Harwich, twenty-five hundred square feet, whatever, year-round, not for, whatever, four-bedroom house. You're paying to hook up to the sewer. You are, you are, you have a timeline to meet, but you are not reimbursed for that, correct? That is cash, cash, but that is money that the homeowner is spending.
There are, there are a bunch of different programs through, through the county.
Through the county.
Then that will help homeowners with those costs.
Are these homeowners who have a septic system now?
In, 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 in practice, just to make the analogy to like our middle-income housing issue. If, like how much income-based is that? Like is it retiree? I mean...
It's all income-based.
It's all income-based. It's all income-based, and Maury Healy put a statement out. It was between seventy-five hundred bucks to twelve thousand five hundred, somewhere in there. But to put a new, whether it's a new septic that needs to get compliant on the non, like the new regulation with the EEP, or just hooking up to a sewer, that some of those expenses aren't retrievable.
Right.
Once you get above a certain income threshold, it's out of your pockets.
I think it's, I think that's a, that's a thing. Like in understanding sentiment, just to your point, like the size of a house and trees, and that's the thing.
Interesting thing, though, although there is a sewer available now to these developments, until the zoning changes, they're still limited to four bedrooms.
So the flow, yeah, to the flow.
So you build, instead of a two-thousand-square-foot four-bedroom house, you're building a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot, I mean, enormous bedrooms or movie rooms.
I'm not familiar with the four-bedroom limit. Is that in zoning or sewer?
It's the title five.
Yeah, yeah. Until, yeah, until that gets... I see, I only have four bedrooms.
Well, yeah.
But the, the other, the other interesting thing that kept on being brought up...
Leave a closet out with no door on it and...
Less as a presentation by somebody, but sort of shout-outs in the, is the, the concept of a, of putting in place a moratorium until we get the rules changed and...
That's the one thing you'll be able to accomplish at the special meeting. Anything else will be too complicated.
Yeah. Are, are, are building moratoriums allowed in Massachusetts?
Yes, yes.
They are.
And there's also, there's also the possibility of doing some kind of a DCPC, you know, a calculation.
They brought that up too, that that's how they did something.
At West Harwich.
It's a moratorium in, in effect for a period of time, so you can be doing the zoning changes.
Yeah. I only mean to say that our charge and what we were appointed to do is broader, and we need to stay neutral. We're not doing the legwork to, to help this group.
To, to that end, just looking at the time and being charging ahead, and I know, uh, Brian, I wanna give you plenty of time, and you're, you're broadly section E on the agenda.
Okay.
Harwich Cranberry Festival Table, options and discussion. Cause Brian has been, and, and we can roll into that with Garrett. You and Garrett have been super busy. Thank you for working with Cindy Williams and the Chamber of Commerce and your subject matter area of like...
Brian has done all the legwork. I've done nothing.
Thank you. Tell us, tell us all about it in whatever order you'd like.
Well, I did through...
You know, cranberry, the whole thing.
Can you bring up the, uh...
Uh, I don't know if I can bring it up on there.
Well, we did, through Ed's contact, we got the table at the Cranberry Festival.
Yay! That's awesome.
I need one more email to get back, just to absolutely confirm that there's no charge. I've had the verbal confirmation.
Yeah, no.
I wanna see it written.
Right.
Rob can be pulling up one.
We don't have much of a budget here.
Thank you.
I'm from New Jersey.
That's awesome. Thank you. That's, that is a marquee community.
There is, there is no charge. That's an issue that I fell on my sword to retain.
So, so I, I put together a table, which is now out on the share drive, which has got just signup slots. So if we could all take a look at it and see what you wanna sign up for, I just put up, you know, our slots. And I think all we're really there for is to answer questions, and maybe we should have some of those cards, the survey cards.
Could we have, could we have more, Sharon? They're so, they're so inexpensive. How many, what's, what's the, what's the wisdom about? How many do we need?
I don't know. I try to encourage people at that meeting to just, you know, that they be there, and you can scan it later, but they went... And I get it. I sometimes want the hard copy, even though I'm comfortable doing the QR and prefer it.
I don't think it's...
That reminds me to do it, you know.
It's long to order, it's like five hundred?
Could we get like a, a printout of like a poster board or something with just the QR code, where people can just scan it? It just sits on the table?
That would help too. Yeah.
So could we order five hundred? Cause I think we will use them. I mean, this is like forty bucks or something. We can do this. Could we also have a...
What do you have on the poster board at this point?
Like it sits on a, you know, what is it? It's like probably twenty by thirty-six, or you know, what a standard poster is.
We, we talked about that, I think, maybe their first or very early meeting.
Yes.
And the possibility of that, and, um, you know, maybe we should brainstorm a little bit about what you would like to see on it, because you can do, you can do a lot of things with a poster. We've done, definitely done...
Let's brainstorm.
What about, what about, I've seen this at other places with like getting like direct action from people. It's only three questions. You were saying it too.
Yeah, just three questions.
What if, like, could we, does the town have like survey iPads that we could just stand there and just, or like, could we use our iPads or something?
I...
Questions.
And we could just be like, oh, you're interested, just.
Joyce McIntyre, Google Drive is hosting this forum, which I'm okay with, but, which is fine.
If you're going to meet with I T services, maybe you could see what they can do.
I would be surprised.
Answers probably would, no, they don't have.
Because I've seen that in other situations.
We could be out there with handheld stuff.
They probably don't have them, but the question's just.
Yeah, if I can do it, yeah, then I have.
These pop-up cards out.
We get hurts to sponsors.
When are we finding having the big survey?
Right, that doesn't, are we going to continue this for?
So I think we had kind of talked about that the big survey is going to go out like, in November, which, but they're, the cards are extremely inexpensive. So it's like, $40. Like, we could order, it doesn't matter. It's a moot point. We won't recycle them if we don't use them.
That if you're planning on releasing the big survey like the first of November, that we really start to stop actively circulating the small one 10 or 15 days before.
Sure, sure. I just think, I mean, there's thousands of people in those fields at the Cranberry Festival. It is a marquee Harwich event.
So now, do you want your table right next to the beer kiosk?
Yes. I'll be there all afternoon.
To Sharon's, to Sharon's point, what would you like, so we can put, I think that we're kind of legalizing around the town seal, which is benign. What do you, like, tell us what you think about Harwich? I mean, what would you like on the poster?
I would think it's either perhaps the mission, or the mission and maybe the three questions that we've got on the survey. Just something to get people thinking.
Just say, hey, Harwich, tell us what you think. Scan this or take this, you know.
We're in a directive for the survey.
Would you really like a poster or just a flyer or something? A poster, you know, we can do a poster that be, be a little deeper if you want to.
You know how they're hard backed? So I think, so this is like a fair. People are beer, food, crafts.
We might be near the beer.
Well, we've done dawn exercises, and that didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
We've done these little dawn exercises where.
It's not that. I think what we're trying to get is.
This is, yeah, people are there to party, they're not going to read a lot, they're not going to do it.
A hard back, like 20 by 30, whatever thing that goes on a easel. We're going to, one of us will be there. I have to think about, like, what's something you can throw at them, like a peanut butter cup, or I have to think about something, Harwichy like that. With the Q R code on it, so you could.
Yeah, but I think it's helpful to have the scope, you know, the mission scope. It's about the land use. I think what you put together with some of the talking points, it's got to be.
Could we hand out, like, you have the poster that's like more aesthetic and grabs your attention with the Q R code, and then to the deep divers, maybe we would have a sheet that you could hand out. And this is pretty quick, right? This is September 18th?
It's a week from Saturday.
Yeah, it's the 16th. 16th and 17th, but 16th is a big day.
Are you two are going to be there? Are you going to be the ones?
Do you want to sign up?
Yeah, see, here's the signup sheet.
You can sign up for an hour.
How do we present up here? Could I?
I will email this, if you want to sign up for an hour, we'll.
I've taken slots because.
What's the date?
It's the 16th and 17th.
16th is a big day.
I can update the form right now.
Can you, can you put it up on the screen?
No, I'm not connected.
No.
Oh, wait, actually, maybe I can dial in.
You're not connected to the internet here, or?
It goes in and out, like, one bar, two bars.
They want to get Beatles attention, sort of.
He's thinking he might dial into it.
Help plan the future of Harwich and have a cartoonish layout of Harwich with the proposed Harwich International Airport.
You want to pass this around and we could sign it?
And then sign it, and then I'll fill it in and put it aside on the drive.
Yeah. I will, if, thank you for helping us with that. If any, I can think on to, I will donate some candy, or, you know, you can throw at people.
Put on the handler property, the Harwich World Trade.
But I think we're over by the nonprofit folks.
Okay.
And I've got the Harwich Fund nearby, which is what I'm.
We can help you with that.
Yeah, how we do that.
Double teaming with. So I'm doing two hours of that, one hour of this.
Other, other things, Cranberry Festival.
We get a whole bunch of people volunteering, somebody out of.
Other things about the Cranberry Festival. So there will be more emails about that.
What to do while you're.
Teach? I mean, we know what we're doing. What do you mean?
Well, just sort of, whether there's a protocol of exactly what we want to say.
You've got to sign up for a time first.
You're going to sign up for a time slot.
What's one to say when you get a close?
Well, but the, but the closeness is a week from Saturday. And what really you're doing is engaging with the public. They're going to come and say, well, what's this?
What's this mean?
What is this all about?
Yeah.
And you're just going to engage, just like you would with the survey, we're trying to understand the needs of the community relative to the land use. This is the definition, and this is the purpose of the.
Tell us what you think here.
Yeah.
And then you can have a piece of candy. What, anything else about that, which we'll have to email more information about, but the signup sheet's going around.
That's, just, we need to get signups.
Okay. Then, do you want to tell us more about your business?
Where's the signup sheet?
Barbara's got it.
It's working its way around. It is out on the shared drive, too.
But you can sign up here, too. I would put my name out.
I can plug it in when everyone.
So we had a meeting with Cindy Williams in the spirit of the business owners in town. That's the stakeholder group that Garrett and I have. And Cindy was very energetic about doing anything that she could to help support this effort. So she, in fact, she was, I haven't circled back to her, but she did put a stack of the survey cards on the desk in the, in the Chamber of Commerce office. I don't know how many people have filled it out, but I thought that was, it was good.
Garrett, could you put that on the drive that we did that? Thank you.
So at any rate, Cindy told, told us that she's got two databases of email addresses that she's willing to send information out to. So actually, let me back up a step. She said she was willing to do anything that we wanted to do, and I explained that we're going to be gathering input before we start doing visioning. So we're going to do some survey, we'd like to do some workshops, workshops on the issues, and then workshops on the vision. So all of that was great. And she was going to, you know, open up her community to us and make, you know, avail her community to do that. So I said, okay, great. The first step would be to send some sort of notification out to her community. So she said she'd be willing to send out an email that would introduce her community to us, to what we're doing. So she told me that she's got 3,500 to 4,000 email addresses in the Chamber of Commerce community. And I said, wow, that's far more business owners than I could have ever imagined. And she said, no, there's about 1,000 email addresses that are associated with the business owners. And there's multiple emails to a business. She said the other, when you're looking at the 3,500 to 4,000, it's just a lot of people that just clicked into, I'm interested in any news updates that are associated with the Chamber of Commerce. Didn't mean they were Harwich residents. It could be anybody associated with or interested in Chamber of Commerce. So Garrett and I were talking about which audience we thought we ought to send this initial introduction out to. And we thought that, and this is our thinking, that we ought to send it out to the 3,500 to 4,000, so to the large audience to say, this is what we're about, and introduce the survey card, ask people to fill it out, because the survey card in there, it says whether or not you're a resident, whether or not you're, you know, what your, what your base is. And then in there, and there's a copy of what we think is a pro forma letter. It's out in a shared drive, like, you can take a look at it and critique and get it back to us. But since we're sending it out to the 3,500, or 3,500 to 4,000, our thought is that we put all of our names on the bottom of it, so that we introduce our committee to them, but also say that Garrett and Brian will be the ones that are working with the business community as a community that we're going to go do deeper dives with. But I made one copy of this, but I'll fast it around if you want to see it.
Sure. Could you pass the schedule, the signup to Garrett or anyone?
I have a whole sack of conflict that we've been, but I might have to move some things around.
Oh, a lot of blank spaces.
Yeah.
Schedules.
Yeah, I've got a conflict.
I'll be able to do a couple. I'll be able to do a bunch.
Something, but.
I'll be there all.
I'll do their morning.
I got a feeling I'll spend a lot of time there. I have a feeling.
I just, you know.
I'm covering two different audiences. I've got the Harwich Fund and this group, which hopefully are fairly close to each other, so.
Into the beer.
Well, we can probably.
I'll do the morning. I'm signing up.
So at any rate, the, our recommendation is that the introduction to this audience is commit, is our full committee, and then we will do some follow up with Cindy's 1,000 audience, which is really just the business owners. But since it's an introduction, we didn't want to be just isolated.
The business owners are part of the 3,500.
That's our understanding, but we'll confirm it.
I, it's funny, my, just for discussion sake, my instinct was the opposite, to sort of go with the thousand business owners, but I don't feel strongly about it.
That was mine initially, and then when he was explaining, I was kind of like, well, they're going to be either around or interested in Harwich, or people contribute, so.
I think, thank you for doing it. I think it's great.
But here's my logic for the larger audience, because you only have one opportunity to do the large audience, and that's introduction.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And the other thought is that there's, when you look at the larger audience, there's probably a connection with a lot of those folks to many people in our committee.
Yes.
Like me, and one, and one of them.
Yeah, that's one.
Well, I'm, I'll get the email as well.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of duplication, and that's.
And so I thought it was a nice way to introduce the wire set to all of us, and just, it makes, it makes it a little bit more personal.
I think this is lovely. Thank you for doing it. It's amazing.
And also, you know, that difference between the thousand and the bigger number, it's really not clear that the thousand is really going to speak with one voice on business issues and on other issues, you know.
True.
They're the core group, probably, that you're interested in.
And the same with the greater number, you may have a lot of people that just enjoy going to the taste of Harwich, but they oppose development like Tracy, you know.
And they're likely to get pulled into other constituencies. And this way, we've pulled them in with the survey, and they'll get tapped for some other group, somewhere else.
Thank you, thank you.
I look to say.
We appreciate it.
Very much.
Beautiful work.
We should find other email lists like that.
It's a model for reaching out to other organizations who have a sense of email list.
My other constituency group has no organization, so.
What's that?
I have one, I have the other. Well, the ministers.
Yeah, ministers and profit.
The Harwich Clergy Association.
Isn't there a heart documental council?
They're, they're.
Well, that's not, but there was a Harwich Clergy Association. I don't know if there really is anymore.
Well, from what I understand, I've got two that I'm talking to, but from what I understand, there's no formal.
Not any longer. Because there was.
I guess Reverend Newberry was one that kept it together. He's one that I've been introduced to.
At least it's easy to get there.
That's what, yeah, that's what. It died off.
Brian, is this on our forums?
This is on.
It's on the shared drive. It's under, it is under Harwich, and then it's under Record of Visioning Process, and then you'll see the Business Community Intake Docs folder.
This doc, okay.
They're all, all three of the docs are in there.
You can, and feel free to poke around. I know we, you know.
There's a lot in here.
I'll come at this with different things. You can, even though I'm hosting it, you can poke around in it. There's nothing sharp or private in there. Like, you can poke, 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 or you can make yourself comfortable in there.
I don't know if you've heard, the minister at the Lutheran Church?
Yes.
Has taken a new position out.
Well, that's what I've understood. And the, and the pastor at Holy Trinity, who I knew very well, left there this past summer. So what used to be a fairly tight, loose, you know.
With some longevity with some.
Informal, I shouldn't say. They've broken away. So one of the people on my advisory committee for the Harwich Fund, who's a minister in Chatham, is very close to some of the ministers, and she's been connecting the.
Thank you, Brian. It's awesome, awesome. And to Ed's point, it's like a great model of how to shout to your area.
Yeah, I'm kind of doing it one off.
Reach out to the new minister at the Congregational Church.
I.
And I don't particularly know his name, but he.
Okay. If you can.
Which, which one?
Which church, this one?
In the middle of town.
Which, in Center, yeah. First, because pilgrims are, you know.
Bob at the seal.
Well, if.
He.
Oh, Center of Town, across the seal park.
Yeah, he, you know, after having had a couple of ministers who weren't really buying his act, this one wants to cooperate incredibly, so I think he'd be a good person.
If you guys, if anybody here could forge me a warm connection to any of the ministers in town, I'm happy to follow up. So let me ask everybody in the room.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Before we keep moving on, it's amazing work.
Coffee and conversation.
Keep up the charge.
Just happened to see that come.
I purposely want to blow through the next point on the agenda a little bit, because is that we all know we're going to have some visioning events, and we know it's going to be this fall, you know, got a little bit of the consensus about how, and we will continue to work on that about time, date. I want to spend, just being mindful of the time, as it's quarter six, spend as much time as we can on the draft of the survey questions that Sharon sent to us, which are in your email. And that's probably our biggest agenda point tonight. And before, as I blow through that, is everyone okay? We're kicking the, we're kicking the visioning event down. We know it's going to happen. We're going to do it. It's going to be good. We don't know the dates yet. Okay.
That's fine.
We'll keep working on that. Let's get to the questions then, Sharon.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes, please, thank you.
All right, so while we prepared some, an initial draft of survey questions right now, there are total 31, and they're broken into various sections based on some really input that you gave us. And keep the survey relatively brief, and at this point, Tammy, I think we purposely didn't include any of those questions, not opening any of the questions at this time, referring that, but having maybe some general, general questions about it. So there, the way this is organized, we totally want your input on this. We have four questions that are generally around community vision.
That is the person that.
And then there are, and there was some input Karen Sinnerboard, who you've met, that provides some input on the housing questions. I will say that their housing questions maybe are perhaps a little bit more detailed than, yeah.
And that might, thank you for that. My sense was that you, we, out of our last meeting, we were kind of like, what is the best practice around answering, asking these questions? And that was her opinion to be this detailed.
Yes, this was, yes, this was her input, you know, to get, get the housing questions out there. She has started her work, and has started meeting with the folks on the housing side. I tried to get her email with her summary, but I can't, I can't connect either. But, yeah, she did have input into the, into the survey questions. So the next six questions, and again, the organization or the order of these can be in any, any order that you'd like. So she's got, you know, six questions that are more focused on specific, like, housing. Then there are three questions on what we're calling transportation slash mobility, a few questions around transportation, a few general questions around open space, but again, not, not a detailed open space survey. That will come later.
Could you?
Mm-hmm.
The transportation mobility thing, is that kind of driven by the open space? What, why, why that?
Well, it's just, I mean, it's a, we just kind of put it out there as it's, I mean, it's typically something that people are concerned about is transportation traffic.
Is that a thing?
I think it is.
Okay, okay, no, I guess, could we mark that for conversation, just because I.
And if it's not, if you don't think it's.
Let's maybe come back to that, but.
As important, that's completely fine. That's the kind of input we want. Then there are four questions, really general ones on open space, and then three, what we're calling climate change or sustainability questions. So there's a few questions around that. You have one economic development question right now, one on community services, and then a couple of questions on infrastructure, one on historic preservation, and then an open-ended, I think the committee asked that we not have, we not have a lot of open-ended responses, so there would be one question. And then at the end are demographic questions. You know, in terms of demographic, you can also open the survey with demographic questions and make that a requirement, that in order to, you know, to go on, you need to complete those. So, but there are a few questions about demographics. So they can either go at the beginning or the end, whatever your preference is. So that's an overview of the format of it, and yes, happy to take comments, questions, suggestions. So that's an overview of the format of it, and yes, happy to take comments, questions, suggestions.
Let me start. I think you've done a great job. I think there's a very good balance between the topics. I think things like housing, you need more weight, and I think your general choices have reflected appropriate weight. Now, there may be some nitpicking that we have to do. And I think the other thing that's done well is balancing between being too general and too specific. It's a very tough thing, designing a survey from scratch. I've got very little to pick on, but the only thing I'd like, and this is really small, you put other as a choice in most of your cases, envision number three, top three priorities facing town Harwich. I think you need an other line on that one as well, unless there was some reason not to.
No, good.
So I'm giving you a vote of support, and again, there may be some specific things that should be changed.
My, an easy one that I think to put in the open space, just because it's open space and recreation. If we could. Some question to the effect of. It's not the specific question, but there has been over a period of time where the focus of the Recreation Department, some of it was COVID, some of it I think is changing demographics. I think we should probably ask about the actual formal recreation programs offered for youth. Like, how important is that, and it may also be a senior demographic, too, like, specific programming for youth, i.e., so there's some concern, like, how are the youth of Harwich learning to swim right now? Because there actually is no formal swimming program, which there was.
You just asked my question.
There, I mean, tennis is less, but, you know, swimming is more of a public health thing, but there, there were programming around tennis, sailing, swimming, that no longer exists, and that's okay, if we don't need that. The swimming is a public health issue. The financial resources have been focused more on some of the, in the summer park programs, which that may be appropriate, but we don't have a lot of questions about that, but I think we should probably ask about that.
Great.
I have a few nitpicks if I'm allowed to.
Please, it's why we're doing this.
On the, the third vision, what are the top three priorities facing the town? We say drinking water quality. I, I would say just water quality, and maybe in per N put drinking water ponds and estuaries, so that it's, it's broader than just the drinking water thing.
Yes.
On, let's see, on the transportation and mobility section, we have something in there about removing minimum parking requirements. And I guess I would, I would say rather than just, that's very specific, I would say, you know, modify.
Parking requirements.
Parking requirements, rather, because we don't know at this point what types of things we might want to do with parking stuff.
Does this seem, I, does this seem inappropriate, a level of detail to the committee, or to the committee? Too much, too little?
I, I think, I mean, the plan has to have a transportation element.
Got it. To make it, okay, to be, to pass the muster, okay.
So I think it's important to have some questions in there about this. It may prove that it's not a hot button issue for people particularly, or maybe it is in specific locations, like Harwich Port, for example, you know, where there's issues.
There is a lot of, I guess, you know, if we could maybe, is the, the, the points, the last two questions, streets should be designed to serve the needs of all users, including vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists. Is that, I know it's not redundant, but do we need both of those? The town needs more sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike paths? Is, like, one or the other? Is that asked? I know, I know they're not asking the same thing, but like, are we, you know, how much do we need to drill down on that information?
Can I say something about that? Part of my problem is, we're talking Harwich, but some of this is totally out of Harwich's control.
Right, the bus stuff.
State.
Yeah, 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 the bus lines, that's, yes.
That's not what people are going to think, though, because, you know, we had the issue eight years ago, 10 years ago, whatever it was, with widening 124 to include, you know, to have the bike lanes, and then they were going to wipe out all the stuff, and yada, 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 the whole, the, 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 and all that. They're doing the same thing with 28, they're doing the same thing with parking, where they're going to mow down trees to put in more parking. You've got parking for summer only. I mean, Harwich and Harwich Port, we're more than just summer months as parks.
Yeah, 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 right.
And transportation. I don't know how to, I'm not sure how to differentiate between the two of those.
I, I share that concern a little bit, Barbara, so thank you for putting it so articulately, because I, like, but I took a little issue with, like, provide better, increased public bus services. Like, Harwich is not going to, that is outside of our scope, like, why even put it as an option?
It's not entirely outside of our scope.
Explain to me, tell me.
The town has a representative on the RTA. The RTA is very responsive to setting, moving around stops and raths in town.
Okay.
Especially, you know, as we bring in new development, sort of thing, you know?
Okay.
This whole thing with Pine Oaks Four, they've, they've started mapping a loop to provide a bus service over there, because it's going to be a large concentration of people.
I guess, so, point, no point, we'll take it, which is why we're discussing it, and then, so I, I guess, maybe the better connect Harwich's various communities, villages, maybe that's redundant to provide better, increased public bus services and infrastructure. Maybe that's asking the same thing? So maybe the bus question is better, because you educated me that the RTA is really responsive, so maybe, you know, like, better connect Harwich's various communities. I mean, we're not going to have a monorail, so like, the bus is maybe this better way of answering that, asking that?
Couple, if I could, of nitpicks in the transportation, is make Harwich more walkable.
Yeah, it's a great question.
And I would put and bikable, because there's a, a question thoroughly down about more recreation-based biking and walking passing trails, whether, that's one thing. But if the town's more walkable and bikable for everyday life sort of functions, it's, you know?
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity to be very precise here and get some important info that meets the standard, but is also applicable to Harwich, yeah.
Implement traffic calming measures to slow down driving speeds, speeds, E G, traffic, uh, uh, speed bumps, crosswalk, bump, uh, bump outs. I, I prefer using the term speed humps, you know, there, in, in Barstool Village, they put in. The, the humps rather than, than the bumps.
Sure.
Um, which, uh, people are finding work very well and do slow down traffic.
Well, we really shouldn't be into surveying solutions either. You're really just putting thought joggers. It's not like we're doing our recommendations yet.
Yeah, but we have to do a lot more.
Overall, it feels like this transportation section is not working quite as well as most of the others.
Right, right, which is why we're doing it. That's good, and I, it's good.
And for example, making it more bikable is great, but if that means the Massachusetts model for complete streets, which totally changes the character of the streets, then there's a debate, a more serious debate to be had.
So, and then, if I could move one down to open space, the first question is how important it is to you to preserve the following, open space designated for recreation, especially for youth and seniors. And this, I guess this is, this is supposed to be open space and recreation sections, but not all recreation is dependent on preserving open space. You know, we don't need a ball field.
Yeah, 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 so I don't know if that question is super applicable to Harwich, yeah.
Is the plan to do a more detailed open space survey later, is that your rule?
I think, and I think that was your recommendation as well, and there, there will be more specific questions, you know, geared to that plan.
I think.
This could be reworked.
Yeah, I think the B question is probably better, and we talked about the swimming thing, which is my own personal issue.
That probably comes in the second open space survey, that's the question.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I think if, if you got rid of A, not A, but we made it maybe, B, I think, is quite good.
Want to change A?
We want to change A.
Can I, can I go back up to the very first question? I'm not sure people will understand what you mean by saying, is the town adequately served by the current open space? I, I, there's got to be another way to ask the question to, to, to basically say, do you think there is enough protected open space in Harwich, or is there a need for more? That's, it's, that's a little awkward phrasing, but I guess my point is that, what is open space? Open space, it could be some undeveloped piece of land that is privately owned, and so you need to be a little more specific of which, you know, if we're talking about protected open space, then, you know, we need to be.
Does it, does it make sense to, like, put, like, briefer terminology next to some of these items that are, I think, are a little bit more gray, right? Like, where it's like, open space, well, what the hell does that cover? And you can say, okay, I get what I'm answering here, because like, I look at some of these questions, and I'm just like.
That's true, yeah.
I, I feel like they're leading me on a little, like, of course I'm going to want to preserve public water supply.
Yeah.
What? Who doesn't?
Like, like, I don't know, I just, I feel like there's, I feel like we're leading the witness in some of these questions.
Push survey.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, you know, I just, I just think I want, like, honest opinions, and it's hard to do in tactile surveys where you're like, you know, vote, like, give me the ranking, give me this, but like, I feel like that sometimes is the best option. When you start doing like the yes/no stuff, that stuff to me is just, it's, you don't even need it in there.
I mean, to that end, the average Harwichan should, I don't understand this question, should more open space be designated to preserve public water supply needs? That's.
The layperson isn't going to know that.
That is a very complicated question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but, but, to your point of like, well, sure, but.
Like, if I don't know, I'm just going to say, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's more of a.
How much is designated now?
Yes, how much is designated, how much is enough?
Are we hitting our numbers? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Could it be reworked so that there were two questions? The first, does the town need more open space, less, whatever, something along those lines? Is open space most important for recreation, for students and seniors, natural resource protection, public water supply needs? Have a list of things that are.
That's good, because that stays neutral and not objective, you're not leading the witness, and you're also quickly helping people understand who might not, that open space isn't just conservation.
This is open space, and I, I would, if we're going to have three questions.
Ball field can be open space.
Yeah, I think anytime we can avoid yes/no stuff, I think, because that's not, unless it's like a definitive thing, but I feel like the, to Dave's point, having a blend of stack ranking and giving them options, I think, just, it opens it up.
So, and I, I advocate, and we'll be through this again, and through this again, and again, that we do ask some specific recreation questions in this, just because I know we're going to do it something different, but this or more, this is a, a golden chance, right? Around some of those recreation questions. To climate change and sustainability, energy efficiency and response to climate change, I don't understand what energy, like, energy efficiency in my home, energy efficiency in the town hall, energy efficiency.
Probably, I, I would think it's sort of, there are a number of pushing for more solar panels and more, you know, you know, expand those things.
I'm pretty interested.
You know, like, when we get at the, at the transportation. That's what they do.
Can, why, from, how, how would the town affect?
Right.
Energy efficiency?
Right, that's, that's, I'm concerned, that question may just be a loss, as composed to like.
It could be that they mean having clean energy.
Well, it, just, just to not burn them out, because it looks like a better question, is rank the importance of the town taking the following steps to maintain the natural environment, which it, it, it has a little bit more, maybe you put your energy efficiency question in that or something, right? It's talking about water, it's talking shoreline stability, yeah, 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 I get, of course, clean energy is important, I just don't, if that's an actionable question in the plan, maybe there's a more specific way of asking it, or putting it into the subsequent question.
Or might be, how concerned are you, if that's what you're trying to find out?
Is it to you to address the following, increasing energy efficiency and alternative energy in response to climate change?
So you're, you're suggesting that, that basically that first question be nested under the third question in this section?
But how is the town going to?
So, well, maybe, could you give an example of, like, do we need more E V plug-in, or more, is that, is that what that's aimed at?
Think of it, there are two, sort of, two sides of the climate issue. There's climate mitigation, and then there's climate adaptation. The mitigation are things like reducing greenhouse gas emissions, yes, E V charging stations, energy efficient town vehicles, climate green community, you know, there's, there's like a laundry list of things the town can do that is within its control. And then on the adaptation side are things like coast, the coastal environment, and are, you know, adaptation measures to, to address and to mitigate impacts of sea level rise, climate change on the coastal environment. So I think, I think of it as two, kind of, two sides of the same coin. So what we will do when we get further into it is, is take a look at what is the town doing now, what is Harwich doing now in terms of these two buckets?
So that's the high-level question of why you're asking it, and so maybe there, yeah.
Stop cutting trees down.
Yeah, that's another, actually, carbon sequestration is, is a need.
Quit nuclear cutting.
Well, there you go, you go back to your earlier comment, yeah, it is, it is a response.
I guess just energy efficiency seems pretty.
So it's too, what I'm hearing is kind of to put it into the third.
Maybe, yeah, right.
It's funny, I, I don't think people hear about energy efficiency anywhere near as much as you talk about clean energy.
Right, I, I think it's just a, it's a kind, it's a somewhat amorphous question. People could answer it extremely important for 50 different reasons. That doesn't help us drill down on ultimately making suggestions.
This is a first draft.
Yeah, of course, yeah, totally, totally, and this is, this is all said in love, Sharon.
I have no problem, I, this is, it's all good input.
You know, the historic preservation question, right on, just because having looked at the open, the pop-up questions, there was a surprising, so I think that's good, we asked that.
And the other, yeah, we don't, we don't know if, if there is, like, there are certain hot button issues that you need to want to ask more questions in this survey. We're trying to cover a broad range of issues, but, but there might be some, you know.
Could we ask, um, could we ask, and maybe this is a little bit evolving, because we're still collecting our pop-up questions, like, for example, we haven't been to the Harwich Cranberry Festival yet. We're all about the trees. Is this an appropriate place to ask, do you support a, like, a tree moratorium? Or do you ask, or do you spend your political capital, say, do you support a tree moratorium in Harwich? Do you support a building moratorium? Are you that provocative in something like this? I, I don't have any, I'm, I'm just, I'm putting it out to discussion.
I'm not sure what that means.
Right, and again, I feel like you're feeding them what you want. Right. And again, I feel like you're feeding them what you want here or you're pandering to a certain group. There are other people in town.
Yeah, I'm just asking how provocative to the committee, like what, this is a privileged time. I think that's why I'm, I'm into the housing questions, because we actually haven't done that. This is a, like a very, a privileged time, we have somebody's attention, so we kind of have the consensus about the housing stuff, but trees and/or building, is there any appetite for putting that in there?
I think there is, but I'm not sure. It's, it's as provocative as you just said, but.
I don't know exactly what, I don't know what it implies, too. Couldn't cut down too much.
So, so, no, to just, would anyone like to jump in there? On Cape Towns, in other Cape Towns, there is, tell us about the trees, whoever wants to be, there are tree.
There's all sorts of ordinances that you, we kind of can't do. We have had one here, if you remember Amy's conversation with us.
Yes, yes.
Several months ago.
Yes, but it was hard to enforce.
We chose to, right, we mean town collectively, we chose not to worry anything about it.
And the, the pro and con is like trees.
So is there, so is there an ordinance?
Was it an ordinance or a program? Because I, I, I'm not aware that they did away with a, a tree ordinance. I know they defunded the, the tree warden, who used to be Link Thatcher, and made the director of the highway department the tree warden.
None of that would have affected the tree clearing.
No, it only covers, uh, street trees and, and town property, but, uh.
Well, maybe the tree question was more appropriate in the open space.
Sure, sure, sure.
For now, on the moratorium question.
I, I, I have no bias in it. I have no bias in it at all. I've just, is this, is.
Could be a little leading this time.
Yeah, my old, my old town, any, any development or additions, you know, a room addition on a house, you had to survey the, the trees on the property and, and, and mark every tree with over a three inch. Trunk diameter, which when I explained that at the meeting, they, somebody said, well, that's a pretty small tree. And I said, upon my former town, a three inch tree diameter was damn near a landmark tree. But yeah, you know, it's, there are a lot of.
We don't have anything in here about the, the culture of the villages of the town. Should we ask about how important that is?
Like the individual villages themselves, yeah.
We don't have anything about culture, period.
That's a good point.
What would you?
Well, you could do something along the line of historic preservation.
Culture encompasses, I'm sorry, Chair, Chair of the Cultural Council, I'm sorry, that encompasses way more, usually people go arts.
What would you like to ask?
I don't know, you know, but we, we talked and we brainstormed the, you know, segments of the population and, and concerns and, you know, historic preservation comes under culture, but it's a big umbrella that includes a lot more. And as I'm scrolling through again now, I'm also looking, is there anything about education in here?
Is this the opportunity to ask, right, education, right, so, uh, but I.
Because that's why I'm here, otherwise I'm useless.
Yeah, yeah, and what, what are we, what are we trying to find out? Like actually in the pop-up survey, having read through those things and anyone can look through them, by the way, and, and my sense is that we will.
Yeah.
Share that data. There's no reason not to kind of collate it and share it with like the board of selection or even on the socials, people are asking, I'm happy to fill out your survey, will you eventually share the responses with us? And I respond, sure. You know, I mean, there's nothing, it's anonymous, it's.
It's twice.
So, I guess, so educate, you know, one of, that was one of the values of the community that we, you know, paraphrasing, we appreciate our great quality public schools. Okay, great. You know, the housing, we're asking a specific question, like what, if, if the town wants to, you know, what, what are the priorities around housing? I guess, and you don't have to have an immediate answer, Bernard, and it's not like you're the only representative of culture, but you know, is there an ap, an appetite to get before, like, do you want to ask anything about the 204? I'm not saying that you need to, but like.
No, it's not just culture, it's also education and, and, you know, seriously, that's, I'm not of much use to this committee in other ways, but that's why they appointed me, in part because of those areas. I'm not a planner, I'm not a lawyer.
But is there?
But I'm looking at the structure of this and I'm seeing bold for housing as a topic. I'm seeing bold for transportation as a topic, bold for all these specifics.
So what would your goal be? What would be your goal heading?
One for education.
Yeah, but I guess we can put that in, what are we asking? And we don't have to have any, I'm not being.
Well, right now, you know, as Garrett just pointed out, it was just mentioned and sort of buried under vision, but I'm just, I'm just asking, as I look at it and go, those are a couple of big things.
Education was one, what was the other one?
Art, culture.
Culture.
I guess what is the question?
But what I'm suggesting is, if you have a heading, if it wasn't, if it's not housing, if it's culture. Now, what we seem to do better on is not the yes, no's and maybe not even the extremely important, somewhat important. If we say, what are the, okay, under economic development, rank the most important of these choices. Under culture, what's the most important of these choices? You know, artists, historic preservation.
Performing arts, historic preservation.
Go through a list of half a dozen things that you guys deal with all the time. Something along those lines.
And, and education, I, uh, maybe need to do a deep dive of what are the controversial, controversies or what are the issues of the day under education that we need to ask about?
You know, document and, uh, preserve the culture of the villages, you know, the folks in West Harwich are doing a pretty good job of that. Harwich Center has done a pretty good job, Harwich Port, not a whole lot been done in North Harwich.
So that was defined?
To the, to the educate.
Well, it's, it's interesting, you go out there and you look at it and, and you look at some of the older buildings and you realize those used to be small storefronts, you know, and they're about ready to collapse and, you know. Having, you know, our, our historical commission, you know, I, I look at the stuff that they did, Mildred Payne and those folks did, and they did, you know, sort of historic tracks, sort of documenting things, which is not really a part of the routine of the historic commission now. They seem to be more entirely regulatory.
To the education piece, if we could just put a little note to ourselves, I specifically waited after Labor Day, but I was going to send our pop-up link to the principals and the superintendent, specifically to distribute amongst the, the buildings in Harwich. So we might have a better sense of what the education issues are, once we have that pop-up data back, specifically to the, I.
Wait another week till you do, if you haven't sent that yet, wait another week before you do, because it's going to get lost in the beginning of the school year.
It was intentional a little bit to wait, so, uh, just to kind of vision around maybe what are some of the educational issues? Maybe it relates to our people, right? If we better, our people, our water, our space and our housing, we don't want to have, we don't want to say that there aren't any educational issues, but maybe there aren't.
It's not issues, it's what do you want 10 years from now? It's planning for education for the next 10 years in this town.
Which is kind of my point of like some of the specific recreation questions.
Yeah, there's only one issue, one is keeping enough kids in families, so that we don't pick up chatter.
So you have an elementary school.
But I think if there are issues that we want to tease out, we put it here. If you don't think there's issues to tease out, then we ought to include it certainly in the visioning part.
Yeah, it's not that it's not important, it's just we may not be specifically asking about it here. This is a privileged.
But I, but I do think that, that the culture of the villages themselves, well, I can't, I'm trying to think of the right word for it, but it's almost like a village spirit or esprit de corps or something that says, there was this, kind of this notion of seven villages. Is that important? Is that something that needs to be part of our, does the town care about seven villages?
They're not equal.
Well, should, they don't have to be equal, but is, is that, is that relevant?
I think it kind of goes to, uh, culture, what makes Harwich Harwich, which is where, I will share the link with all of you so that you can read through the responses. It's fascinating, descriptive, qualitative, like, you know, like, it kind of gets to your point a little bit, like what makes Harwich Harwich.
You know, in some ways, Brian, it's interesting you're saying that because years ago, it was the seven villages and there was a culture with each of the villages, but in the last 25 years, that hasn't been the case. It's Harwich and now, more recently, Harwich Port and Harwich. So the others six are all under Harwich. I mean, South Harwich has unbelievable history, so does North Harwich and stuff, and the problem, I think, is that people, maybe we have fewer people that are connected to that historically, I don't know.
So are we asking about like his, history in the seven villages?
It's important to preserve the history of North Harwich and South Harwich, maybe even Pleasant, Pleasant Lake, I don't know much about Pleasant Lake, but then there's a whole different set of issues for the more active villages.
Really intense jazz club in Pleasant Lake.
Did it? Okay, so, so there's some history there, but there's a lot more issues going on in Harwich Center, Harwich Port, East Harwich is another beast of a town.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, what, what are the people that we're asking, we're asking people their input. What are they connecting to? Are they connecting to Harwich and Harwich Port? Or are they connecting to the villages? What, what, what should, we're trying to understand what they connect to. We're, we're not trying to judge what's correct or not correct.
I guess we're, you're asking that, like, what, what do you love about Harwich, right? We've asked them about this.
I always, I always end my letters with, from a McManus, Harwich Center, Massachusetts.
So you're like subculture in there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, to that point, somebody was asking me this question and I went back and looked, but there was a, there was an East Harwich plan that was a link within the last LCP, the 2011 LCP, which is no longer there.
You mean what's brought up about the.
They decided to kill it?
I don't know.
About they were going to, sidewalks and they were going to build a, the rich center there, yeah.
Mindful of the time, we can keep diving, we've done everything on our agenda, we can keep working on this. At some point, at some point, Jeff is going to, uh, send us a pigeon that we're ready, a pigeon or a smoke signal to go, just to go, to go over there, just so we know. Sharon, what, what, um, what, do we want to delve into the housing questions? We didn't.
It's, it's up to you, but I think what would be most helpful right now is like, are we missing any sort of major themes?
So we think maybe culture, we think maybe education.
I think education, education, culture.
Education, culture, and we'll pencil that in. We talked about making the, we talked about the traffic, making traffic more, uh, transportation more precise maybe or applicable. Open space, a little more precise with the rec question, the climate change and sustainability, a little more precise. I li, I still think our open-ended question will be good.
Well, um.
What about the community services, which is, there are still a couple of yes, no questions in here.
Is that the infrastructure?
Community services, do you believe the town, do you believe the town is doing enough to provide adequate healthcare services for residents?
Again, you can do a.
It's a multiple choice, but what would, what, do you suggest what some of the issues or needs are under that?
This might be you, Jim. The question, community services, do you believe the town is doing enough to provide adequate healthcare services for residents? From your, not that you have to speak for all the older folks, but since we have subject matter.
I'll speak for some of them.
We have, just for sanity's sake, we have areas that we're in charge of, are such a great advocate for our, for our senior citizen friends. Would you like to put more in there, more specific questions around, from the senior perspective, around, uh, healthcare services?
Yeah, I think, healthcare service is an interesting one, because nobody can find doctors anymore, and so that would be one of the things. I don't know what a town does about that.
That's, that's what I was wondering, I read this question too, what, what is the town's?
What the town can do, I think, is, you know, we're going to have a whole number of people with Alzheimer's in a couple of years that we have now, and maybe we should be planning for, for that type of service to get.
So there was a shout out to the town nurse in our, in our data.
She's fantastic.
So, uh, maybe do, we're marking here, uh, do you have to provide adequate healthcare services for residents? Are you saying, like, do we need more? And then would you have like A through, you know, you pick four, you're saying Alzheimer's services, what, what else?
I mean, Alzheimer's transportation is there, although Council of Asia does a very good job.
What about just primary care?
But primary care, but again, it's a problem, I'm not sure, and so are the prices that stop and shop, but I'm not sure, there's much, I don't know if that's our problem.
Yeah, no, I just, is there, is there, so you're saying a need for planning, what would you like, like?
I mean, if I were in charge, I would truly be really figuring out how to deal with Alzheimer's, because I would be doubling the size of the community center, because it is so popular. It is, you know, providing so much social isolation avoidance, it's full of older adults every day and younger people use it too, because that's a great gym.
I've leveraged the gym a few times. Pretty good.
It's really good, and they even have, there's going to be more and more, even now, they could do 50% more activity.
Yes, and they just put a brand on the floor in the summer.
Swimming pool is such a thing that they. I mean, you think about the swimming pool, 70, 80% of it would have been paid for by summer residents and, and year-round residents would have used a, a shower.
It was very controversial, I know, right? So I.
But, but pools are paid.
So health, so I guess we, we think we could have a little more, and you may have some stock questions about health.
It may not be, healthcare may not be a good, right question, it may be more a broader question.
Right, healthcare is not correct.
Take healthcare off it, just say service.
Services include fire and police?
Yes, but they make, they play a big role for older adults too.
Well, maybe we should qualify a little bit tighter, say, do we, do we believe the town is doing enough to provide adequate services for seniors? And maybe leave it.
For infant toddler care.
Right, to several questions.
Is it mental health, is it physical health, is it all, you know?
And, and maybe if there is a place to write in where you say, what would be, name a service or name something that you feel may be underserved or missing.
It's a good way of asking it.
You know, so that way it's not a paragraph, but it's.
Well, it's a good way of asking it.
But rank, what are the most important needs on police, fire, healthcare, et cetera?
It's an interesting question to ask, it's a provocative way of asking it. What, assuming, you know, we're like reasonable functional, you know, you dial 911, they come, right? We have a community center, things like that, where, I mean, we're, we're, there's a lot of positives. It's an interesting way of asking it of what, uh, what is need is not being met.
Right.
That's a, a negative, that's very exciting.
Might be nice to see a volume.
I think our town has done a lot.
Yeah, 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 right.
Nice to see seniors, to see, uh, young adults, to see young families.
Families and children, we do have.
I, I.
Lisa Gilmore does.
It's more about creating a place where older adults and children can, you know, that, that's really a, a more, and.
Which is why we go back to housing, water, space.
Well, yeah, like, if you think about, one of the big issues for, for older adults is really, um, social isolation, transportation and probably some form of housing, you know, like, you know, or, so a new type of housing is important.
So what have we structured this thing into?
Well, it's going to be messy, but we'll come back.
But it's like the ones with the bullet choices, and you can either rank them or choose, seems like that's working better than the yes, no's and the extremely somewhat least.
The other thing, about, about, um, two years ago, we did, we did a survey, uh, we did a, a retreat of, about what are the issues facing older adults in Harwich? And we got people from all over the county and some from the state to come and brainstorm that, so I could send that, you know, the write-up of that at my.
Be nice, thank you, thank you. Then Margo was going to say something.
Circling back to the, the question about the seven villages, what if we put a, um, a question in to say, what are your specific concerns for your neighborhood slash?
Well, it's great. Oh, it's brilliant.
Great.
I'm gonna excuse my...
Yeah, cause I did say that, Brian, that probably, when you were talking earlier about, that where you live is, the village you live in is going to color how you say it, that's a perfect way to put it.
What, yeah, what concerns do you have for your village slash neighborhood?
Because you're probably unconsciously responding to everything by where you live in the town, if there are differences, you know.
So far, we've had a Harwich Center identification, an East Harwich identification, I'll be glad to say Harwich Port.
Harwich Port, but by way of Harwich Center, and several different places in Harwich, East Harwich. So I've lived in three out of the seven of them over the years.
I know, I definitely identify as Harwich Port.
Yeah, I do now, I've been there the longest.
I have a schizophrenic name, but the, the start of my driveway is in South Harwich, and my house is in Harvard.
What do you, what do you see?
I don't know.
You don't know, you don't know if you're coming or going.
I'm just trying to figure out which, which, uh, community I'm in. Where do you live?
And the teachers and the first staff, when there was such a thing as a student, we didn't have one. And we lived down there, it's by default.
I believe so.
But doesn't that...
By default.
Go ahead, yeah. That level of importance, do you want that part of your demographics? Do you want people to identify if they know what's there?
No, I mean, are the villages in Chatham or Orleans, or is this a Harwich?
Most of the towns have, like...
They're boroughs.
I, I have to say, I'm, I'm, uh, yet to be decided about how important this is, but I appreciate it. It's, I, I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I just think it's hard, it's how we paint the vision, though. Does it feed into the vision, or do we need to start to slide away?
No, no, I think you're, I think you're really on to something.
What sort of regression correlations are we getting?
I don't know how to dig it out.
Yeah, 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 I, I, um, and when you, when you talk about what makes Harwich Harwich, and what does Harwich look like in 10 years, particularly in the context of, if you talk about East Harwich development, all the history that goes into that, a sense of how a community feels, how a part of the town feels, I think you're on to something. I, I, I would agree with, I, but we maybe haven't figured out about how to ask it.
What you do with West Harwich too, if you think of what's, what Duncan and Edward also, 28 or anything like that, so...
Yeah.
Go ahead. Do you also have a question, I mean, one of your first, what do you value most about Harwich? You could include, you know, village character, or village...
Oh, yeah.
Individual village identity, something like that.
Actually, put that in there, so we might get at it a couple of different ways, but that's a rank order question, right?
Yeah.
So village identity.
Whether that is important to people or not, it's still important to people.
Is the fact that Sharon take everything we've done today and just have another version?
Digest.
Yes! Yes.
Oh, yeah, that is...
Sharon, that, that's not a rank order, in that first question, so it's a good chance that would never be selected. Village identity would never come above anything else there, I would imagine. And that's might be important to know.
Do you, is there a way of asking, how important is for one to 10?
How about that, the, the, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I was thinking about this earlier. Uh, I didn't wanna go all the way back to one, I just hope we're done. But I think those, those answers ought to be in rank order. Tell me, what should be your number one, two, three, four, five? That way, we'd really be able to tell whether village identity means anything.
Sure, I get you now, okay. But my, my suggestion is really trying to get at something else, which is, most of the questions that we've asked are thinking about Harwich as a whole.
Hmm.
But are there specific issues that we should be thinking about for specific, specific neighborhoods?
To the point of, so you're saying East Harwich is a tap of mine, just cause, you know, that, we've been to that recently. Their issue may feel very different than, say, someone in the heart of Harwich Port, may feel very differently than what's going on in West Harwich, to your, to your point.
What you said is important.
Well, I mean, I bought into that, because, like, I understood it to be more of a year-round neighborhood, that was...
And it ties into the culture stuff, I think you were bringing up too, and like, how important that is for each area.
Yeah.
Yes, Sharon, we go on to the question.
It'll work out.
Colors, they're working out.
Or do you pay it as, like, development, development, parking, stayed away from open-ended questions, but...
I think open-ended would give us a better, better idea.
Yeah, yeah, we only, there would only be two.
Yeah, they're just hard to, they're hard to evaluate.
To, to correlate, you know.
It's okay.
But we could get some good feedback from it.
But, yeah, you know, it's...
But we get months in between all of them.
If there are differences...
On the data geek, they're impossible.
How people feel about what should be for their area or their village, um, you know, to a certain extent, you know, we have a zoning ordinance that the, the standards are pretty uniform throughout town. And, you know, maybe there is a distinction to be made in standards between areas where the norm is one acre zoning as opposed to areas that have higher density.
And this, it's a really good, it's a really good point to the original demographic question you asked. We may wanna actually have somebody identify, because, say, Survey, Survey Monkey, you will then be able to separate out what a West Harwich cohort looks like compared to an East Harwich cohort.
Yes.
Sure, and, and they can always say, don't know.
Right.
Yeah, 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 no.
Yeah, I have questions about that. To me, there are few issues specifically related to Harwich Port where I live, but most of the things in that survey, I would answer as Harwich, really.
Sure.
Do you need to know, because I live in Harwich Port, how I think about how...
Well, it'd be interesting, it'd be interesting to run that from a statistical analysis perspective.
I probably wouldn't go that way, okay.
Yeah, you, you don't know until you get the data, but it might be one of those things you wish you had.
Yeah, no, I think it's worth it.
Since we're not gonna, we presume we're not gonna be able to, I mean, drill down on, by ZPM, right? Like, we have to ask it.
They think they do in Harwich Center, but they don't.
What's this?
Parking, that's a Harwich port.
That's a Harwich port issue.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Says the man who lives by George's Pizza.
I get it.
Hey, we got rid of parking on one side of the street, we had a victory.
That's a big win, that's a big win. But people still park there.
We appreciate it.
Not too much.
No, no, it's been really good.
Yeah, that seems like a good...
I walk down there all the time with my dog, I'm like, man, it's so crazy.
Very different. Not now, since it's only on my side, my bell box gets hit more frequently, but it's still better overall, so we have to park.
Barbara, you were about to say something.
I always support your concern.
My old town, parking, you know, it was the ma- the main commercial street that ran through the residential. And, you know, in a, in a four-block stretch, you had five Chinese restaurants. And no parking for any of the restaurants, and the streets off of it all had houses that were on 35 to 50-foot wide lots. And everybody always found a place to park to go to eat, and to park for their house, you know. I, I, I have less sympathy for parking issues than a lot.
Everybody who decided they really wanted to badly enough, a lot of them give up and they don't go do it.
Sharon, any, uh, just because we can maybe potentially adjourn and be on time to the Board of Selectmen, anything else you need? We've given you a lot of feedback on Mr. Park.
Yeah, there's still a couple of yes, no questions in infrastructure, and I wasn't really sure about the public storage arrangement, like, that seems very vague right now. Um, and we don't really have a lot of choice, right?
Wastewater, uh, road quality, water, parking.
Okay, instead of a specific question about...
When it, those use...
Snowplow, when there's snow.
Okay, so we'll turn that into a more general question.
I would encourage everyone to, is your thoughts, like, I think that the village thing is really nuanced. I really appreciate, Vernon, that the culture and the education, like, if it kind of comes to you, like, I mean, you can shoot me an email, you can shoot Sharon an email, like, we have to not be...
Pull it together.
Yes, not deliberating, but like, some progress has to be made in between meetings, so feel free to fire up the email.
Throw the ideas, okay.
Yes, Margot?
I'm not gonna be able to attend the, the October meeting, so, um, I don't know, I think it's unlikely that I can phone in because I'm, we're all, we're all, we're somewhere.
This sounds great.
No!
Oh, okay. Good, that was a little word.
You can, you can, you can, you're, you're such a wonderful emailer, you can provide feedback on the questions via email.
Has anybody done it by Zoom or whatever this is?
Yeah, well, I've done this before.
And it's worked, it's worked.
It's fine, sometimes I can't hear the people, but for the most part, it's all right.
Yeah.
Any other new business, or points of, points of inspiration? No, just so you know, the game plan, Sharon's, uh, we were asked by, um, town administrator to give an update, and so Sharon's gonna give, you know, the consultant perspective of how the whole process works. And you saw my slides, my point is to kind of give the human perspective, you're welcome to comment.
Love it.
Your slides are awesome. The one thing I...
Very positive, upbeat, thank you.
Trying.
The one question I do get asked, you know, after, especially after the 19th of August, and people know that we're doing this process, is, you know, what, what's the timing of our large activities? And I know you've kind of laid it out in your proposal, but it might be nice at some point to put it on a single slide with chevrons, to say...
Timeline?
Yeah, so it's a big timeline, like, it might be quarterly, or something that just, is something that we can share. And eventually, it probably goes in that website, so that we can speak to roughly when we're gonna be doing, visioning, and where we are. Cause I think otherwise, it becomes a mystery to people.
Yeah, I think people thought we, we were gonna have it all done by next week, and I was like, no.
Yeah, that's good.
And I will say that when I tell people that we're, we're gathering input on the issues, they're happy to hear that. And I say, no, we're gonna be working deep dive on that, we're not doing it in a hurry. They, they respect and appreciate it. But that's, that's only gonna buy us a certain amount of time.
I think transparency, like, just to say it again, like, a lot of the feedback on social media, we're ready for us, so we can share, okay.
Love we journey.
Second?
Second.
Have fun.
All in favor?